Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this evening's Kings Board of Education regular board meeting to order. Mr. Morrow, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Groff?
Here.
Ms. Callen?
Here.
Mr. Belfrom?
Here.
Mr. Skrull?
Here. Please join in the pledge of allegiance. I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
A second motion.
Mr. Morrow?
Ms. Groff?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Callen?
Yes.
Mr. Belfrom?
Yes.
Mr. Skrull?
Yes. First item on our agenda this evening is reports and presentations. Mr. Sears, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Skrull. Um, we are fortunate this evening to have our wonderful Raze representation, uh, presentation this evening. So I'd like to invite our Raze reps up and let's hear all the great things.
Let's hear all the great things that are happening at Kings High School.
From all the happenings for November, first, we're gonna hand it off to Derek and Maya to get us started.
Hi, everyone. I'm excited to start you off tonight. Hi, everyone. I'm excited to start us off tonight with some notes about our arts department here at Kings. Starting us off with our orchestra, we have our Kings High School orchestras giving a joint fundraiser concert as a part of their fundraising campaign. Now, you might have recently seen your favorite orchestra member trying to sell you something. That is all related to the hard work all orchestra members put in to try and fundraise stuff for their program. The, the contest concluded with a voting session in which donations were taken as the votes. We also have our Kings High School marching band winning the state's band association class four A championships. This is the sixth year in a row that the group has won the title, and it's exciting for them because this is the band equivalent of, say, one of our sports teams winning their state championships. My main highlight for you guys tonight is, of course, the school play Until Winter. Until Winter is actually an original play written by Kings Director of Theater, Mr. Pete Moore. But one of the things I really want to highlight is how this production was a labor of love for our theater students. So I will talk a little bit about how this fall play process works. The first time the students learn about the play is actually the previous school year in May, so that they have the whole summer to work on their audition material. That way auditions and then rehearsals can start in August. And they go three months culminating in a tech week full of rehearsal every day in dress with props and everything. It's a whole lot of work for our theater students, but it turned out very well. I got kind of emotional. I went to see it on Friday night, and I want to say congratulations to everyone who was involved.
All right, checking back into our clubs. Um, as we know, Kings has so many amazing clubs. Sources of Strength has recently just announced their What Helps Me campaign. This campaign is all about finding within our walls of our school what students need the help with with mental health. Um, through our social media presence and making some amazing presentations to come. We are trying to study and research students to find ways to help them. Our languages have also been having amazing meetings. French club just had a warm and cozy Ratatouille watching meeting. German club just had a pudding mit gabel. If you're unsure of German, it means pudding with forks. I looked at Frau a little odd, but we had a blast. We made traditional German lanterns as well. Spanish club just had a game filled meeting playing a traditional Mexican bingo called Loturia. Moving on into fellowship of Christian students, they just announced their Operation Christmas Child Good Samaritan shoebox donation. Students have the opportunity to take a shoebox and fill it with school supplies and necessities and needs for kids across the globe. Stronger Together has had their Friendsgiving meeting. They spent the time sharing delicious food and announced their big event of the year, which is Kings High School's first cultural night, so that's something to look forward to.
All right, thank you, Derek and Maya. Taylor and I will take over here, jumping into some of our academics. So first up, our National Art Honor Society hosted a painting event, like they painted mugs. They taught teachers from the junior high and high school. And then they also hosted a cookies and canvas night for the community, so a big thank you to them for hosting these fun events.
Our Spanish National Honor Society recently held their ninth induction ceremony, where they inducted fifty-six new members and were joined by forty returning members. The students that were inducted must have a three point five GPA and be enrolled in Spanish III, Spanish IV, AP Spanish Language, or AP Spanish Literature.
And then, as many of you guys already know, our Engineering III students hosted their haunted house again this year. Um, it was a super big success. We were able to take over five hundred students through it this year. A lot of people don't realize how much work goes into these. Pretty much everything you see in there is designed, built, coded, decorated, everything by the Engineering III students. So we are super proud of our work and excited that everyone enjoyed it.
Our Kings biomedical, biomedical science classes visited Beacon Orthopedics recently, where they got to hear from Dr. Ryan Card. They also performed a knee arthroscopy, open anatomy dissections, and suturing techniques. Each student was given a turn to practice the techniques and ask questions to these medical professionals. It was an incredible hands-on experience and excellent career advice was given to our students who are looking to pursue a career in biomedical sciences.
And then our AP Digital Media Arts students recently competed in the Crosley Custom Cruiser Contest, um, where they transformed a record player into a piece of art. The theme this year was band together. Um, they said it shows how connection and collaboration can turn individual contributions into something stronger, brighter, and more meaningful when they come together. I think looking at their artwork, obviously, it's very pretty, but I think we can all tell that it embodies that theme very well.
Our AP Spanish Literature class participated in a mock trial about the historical figure of La Malinche, regarding her role in the conquest of Mexico by the Spaniards. We got to assume different roles in the mock trial and research our characters to decide if she should be found guilty of treason.
All right, and then, of course, to celebrate Halloween, our seniors had their monster mash. They paraded through the school, showing off their costumes to the underclassmen who voted for their favorites. It was a super fun day with great costumes, as you can see up on the screen.
All right, heading into service. Last week, National Honor Society seniors took a field trip to a Child's Hope International, where we packed food, toured the facility, and wrote notes to recipients of our care packages. By the end of the day, we had packaged enough meals to feed fourteen kids for a year in Esuatini, which is a country in Africa.
And then also this past week, we held Be the Difference Day, which is led by both teachers and upperclassmen mentors, where we encourage freshmen to embrace vulnerability as a strength through open discussions, team building activities, and shared experiences. This is a very highly anticipated day at the high school. Taylor and I both participated in it our freshman year and have come back two years in a row to be peer mentors. And we are super excited because this is a new thing this year. We're offering a second one for juniors in the spring.
All right, congratulations to our ten seniors who signed this past Thursday to continue their athletic and academic success. We have Willem Kimpel and Maren Bodie for lacrosse, Adrian Kearns and Bella Braun for soccer, Leah Daniel for track and soccer, Leah Michner for softball, Sophia Richardson and Ava McIntyre for volleyball, Maya Schweigert for swim, and Chesney Wisebroad for acrobatics and tumbling. We are so proud of them and even more proud to call them classmates and friends.
And then we have a super special student spotlight this month. A huge congratulations to our men's soccer team who made it to the state finals for the first ever in the program's history. We are super proud of them. They were kind of hallway celebrities all their entire way through their postseason. Um, but yeah, super proud of them and thankful for everything they contributed to the community. And then that is everything we have for you guys tonight. Thank you so much for listening, and we will see you in December.
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Mr. Skrull?
So what was the verdict of the mock trial? And secondly, um, with respect to the Kings interns, whose knee was it?
Just curious. Thank you all.
I, I do have one, one follow-up question.
Yeah.
So you had mentioned the cultural night at the high school. When is that going to be? In the spring. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you all. Um, continuing on some, uh, of our celebrations that we have, we're, um, we've invited Ms. Lindsay Six here this evening. Uh, Lindsay, as you know, um, some of the things that we've done here at Kings is we give out Kings flags. And so Lindsay has been the, just for random things that people do great, they go above and beyond, and it's a, it's a, it's a kind of a, an honor to have one of the Kings' flags. Lindsay has, uh, as a teacher, has received a couple of these flags, um, either from students or different recognitions. And so she came, um, and said, okay, I, we tasked her, just give them to whoever you think. So I'm not gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that, and I'm gonna turn it over to, um, our amazing Spanish teacher at Kings High School, Ms. Lindsay Six.
Thank you so much for that introduction. Um, yes, hi, I'm Lindsay Six. I teach Spanish at the high school. And I have been honored to receive, uh, three Kings' flags in this past year, and, um, I, uh, thank you. Um, and I have one proudly to spray in my classroom, but Mr. Sears, uh, tasked me with passing two of the flags on. And it's such a seemingly impossible task to pick from the amazing staff members here at the school, so what did I do? I passed it off to my children. Um, so I brought my own kids with me here tonight, and they would like to present a flag to their most influential teacher they've had so far.
Hi, my name is Keaton Six, and I'm a fifth grader at Columbia. I would like to give a flag to Mrs. Jones, my third grade teacher at KME, from KME. Mrs. Jones is honestly the nicest person in the world. Like, if there were a million teachers in line, I would always pick her. Every time she walks into a room, she makes a dark light, dark light bulb light up. Her smile could probably light up whole worlds. One of my favorite memories was when I was writing my essay about a game on Roblox named Rainbow Friends. She printed me something special off her 3D printer to go with it. If I was ever a teacher, I would want to have a 3D printer to make things for my students just like her. I also loved the parade deck activities where you could make your own answers and draw your own answers. They were so fun. And she introduced me to some of my favorite books, like the Stick Dog series and a book called Bones. But the biggest thing she did was make me feel excited to come to school. Every day I came thinking, what fun thing are we gonna do next? Because everything with Miss Jones was just so fun. She even made me like math. Before her, I thought I sucked at math. But her table lessons made me so smart, like so smart. And I still use the box method that she taught me. She also made me feel seen. When I volunteered, she actually called me. Most teachers look right at me and pick someone else. And it made me feel like I was invisible. But not Miss Jones. She made me feel like I mattered. And she even came to my slum meet, which made me feel really confident. Miss Jones, if I could tell you something right now, it's this. You're the best teacher ever. If I, if I could, I would. I would have you every day for everything. You're just so awesome, and I love you so much. Thank you for the fun times we had learning in class and for making everybody smile. My life wouldn't be complete if I didn't have you as my teacher.
Hi, my name is Brylee Six, and I'm a sixth grader at Columbia Intermediate School. I would like to give a flag to Miss Immerman, my fourth grade teacher from KME. Miss Immerman is one of the funniest and most fun teachers I've ever had. Every morning she let us play games, and on Fridays we did freeze dances and got to pick from the prize box, which was honestly legendary. She always joked that she was eighty-three years old, but just wore a lot of makeup to look twenty-three. And that she had a YouTube channel where she did chair yoga. None of that was true, but she said it so seriously that we almost believed her anyway. She introduced me to the Mary Kate and Ashley books, and all of her projects were my favorite, literally all of them. She made me feel great about learning, and she encouraged me to work harder and never give up. When I needed help in math, she always helped me right away, and that made me feel really cared about. I always hated math because I felt really bad about, really bad at it, but she helped me feel confident. If I could tell her something now, I'd say she made school fun for me. I don't think my life would have been this fun without her. She always had a smile on her face and a lot of energy to teach. And because of her, I actually want to be a teacher too. I want to play games with my students, help them learn, and make sure they have fun while doing it, just like she did for me. When she was moving to first grade, she let me have some of her old school supplies, and I have used them at home to play school with my brother Keaton, even though he's not the best student when we play. Thank you, Miss Immerman, for being such a special teacher and for inspiring me to want to be one too.
Yeah. This can be tough to top. Very, very well spoken, both of you.
Thank you, six kids. That was awesome.
Yeah, congratulations to Miss Jones and Miss Immerman, um, two excellent educators in Kings. We're thankful for your work. Your only job now is that has to be displayed in your classroom proudly. And, uh, but we're, uh, we're, thank you for all the work that you do with our kids each day. It was great to hear that, uh, the impact that you've had. Um, so moving forward, we're gonna invite, uh, Bill Bromback from HGC. Um, it's tough act to follow, Bill. Yeah. So Bill's gonna, uh, provide some updates on, uh, the project so far, um, and where we are in some of our bidding process and the, the, the latest GMP that we're gonna ask the board to approve, so.
Thanks, Mr. Sears. Yeah, tonight I just want to give you an update on the, uh, progress of the actual high school site. Uh, we're gonna go over GMP number six, which is in front of you guys, uh, for, uh, approval tonight. And then just give you an update on GMP seven, which we're well on our way of, uh, with overall progress of the high school, um, accumulation of all cost. Uh, just a quick update on the actual high school site. Um, we are well into foundations down on the building. Probably within the next two weeks, you're gonna see the first stair shaft, uh, reach the roof line. So that's gonna show you the massing of the building and how high it's gonna be for the classroom wing. Um, concrete, um, in the, um, arena area is, uh, getting pretty close to done. Uh, waiting for the next steps and the next subcontractors to kind of move in, which is part of the GMP six that we're, uh, gonna put in front of you tonight. Um, last time that we approved, um, structural steel for the building, structural steel is well on its way. Uh, we've actually have some already on site, and then, uh, more, uh, for the first, um, um, deck area, which is gonna be the auxiliary gym, is gonna be coming in early, um, January. So that's gonna be an exciting time, uh, to get things, uh, moving forward. So tonight, we're gonna go over, uh, GMP number six. Uh, GMP number six is, uh, what we discussed last time was the critical elements for the next subcontractors that need to move on board. Um, there's gonna be right around, I think, eight or nine, uh, subcontractors that are moving forward right now, which is gonna be, I think it's about thirty percent of the overall cost, um, now versus what's gonna come on the next board meeting on, uh, twelve nine, so December ninth. Um, those are, uh, the balance of all the site work. So this is the site work that, uh, that's moving the mound that's down, down there. That's gonna move it over to the south side and finish up the entire building pad. Um, this is gonna be the balance of the structural steel. Moving forward, the, uh, site and building electrical, um, all the site retaining walls are moving forward with this. Um, all the plumbing for the buildings moving forward with this package. Um, all the masonry blocks moving forward with this package, as well as all the masonry veneer, um, for the building. Uh, these are all critical just because of the timing of where we're at. We're looking for the next subcontractors to be on board and kind of mobilize into the site, um, around December first. So that's why we wanted to pull these forward, um, to keep the momentum that we have out there. Um, Kane, I can confidently come here and report today that, um, this package that we're presenting for GMP, um, number, uh, six is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars under budget. So that's an accumulative update of two hundred and seventy-one thousand for all the GMPs on the high school that we've, uh, brought forward. So two hundred and seventy-one thousand to date under budget. Um, and like I said before, the mobilization, you're gonna start to see the mason coming out the site, um, right around, uh, December first. So to give an overall update on GMP number seven, so GMP number seven is gonna be the balance of all the, um, high school cost. Uh, we actually have all those bids in-house right now. Uh, we're ninety percent through what we call the vetting process. That's us doing interviews, that's us doing scope reviews with them, um, and then us getting ready to, uh, sign them up for the next steps of the job. So we're about ninety, uh, percent through with that right now, which is probably a little bit further ahead than where I thought we would be at this point in time, which is a very good, um, outcome. Um, I can say that we had a great, um, turnout of bidders, um, for this job, so there was a lot of momentum, um, for this project. Um, we had, um, some packages had up to eight bidders, um, for them, for, you know, flooring and, and stuff like that on the building. There's a few packages where we had a little bit less, but overall, great turnout and a great results, um, for the project. So one other thing I wanted to discuss tonight is I can confidently come in here and report that we will be under budget for the overall job. Initial reports are saying that we're gonna be about three points, uh, three point five million under from our last, uh, design development estimate. Um, now the process is, is we gotta continue our vetting process for the last ten percent of the subcontractors, work with the districts of understanding what alternates we want to take, uh, what type of, um, um, things that we may want to put back in the program or not. So that's the next step with the district. Um, and then once we solidify those, that would be the next package, uh, moving forward, um, on December, um, ninth. Any questions on high school overall? Um, where we're at, where we're going, um, what the next steps are kind of, kind of look like?
It's great to hear that we're coming in under budget. How are we looking on schedule timeline?
So right now, we are progressing right where we need to be on schedule. So the big critical element was December first of having the next subcontractors out there. That timeline is still looking good, um, and that's why we want, we wanted to come in here with this, um, uh, package before that, uh, twelve nine date, that way that we can immediately get them out there and get them started with masonry. So the real critical element for us is the arena area, kind of where the locker rooms go. Um, that's gonna be the first area to put masonry in. It's kind of the lowest level of the building. Um, and then once we're able to kind of build up the auxiliary gym, um, then we can actually start on the classroom wing and have structural steel starting in the first of February. So, uh, I think we're right where we need to be, and, uh, as long as we can keep some of this rain down like we have today, that's gonna be a kind of a hindrance to us, but, um, I think we're right exactly where we need to be right now.
Then how's, how's the colder weather we're getting into? How's that gonna impact the construction?
So the good thing is, is we're going through foundations for the winter. So foundations through the winter is a easier element for us to deal with. Uh, masonry, we're gonna have to deal with on, uh, what we call tenting it in. And typically, when temperatures get below twenty-five degrees is when we have to take it to the next level. Um, so you will see tenting into scaffolding, um, plastic and heaters and stuff through the winter. Uh, but the good thing that we don't have to do through the winter is what we do on the slab, on grades, all of our concrete flat workpours. Those are all gonna be hitting in the spring, um, which that times out really well. Um, I think when, once we start moving dirt on the south side of the property, that's gonna be a little bit of an element that we're gonna have to work through, through in the winter. Um, but that would be the only kind of concern is kind of the south side of the property. I mean, obviously, we have, already have the building pad and the building established. So that was a, a big push over the summer to get to where we are right now. That way we can progress through the winter.
Space question.
Yes.
You said the steel is coming in. Do we have enough room to put the steel out how it's needed? And then also get all of the construction workers a place to park?
Yes, so, um, on the, uh, west side of the building, uh, where our construction trailer is, that's most likely, uh, where all the construction traffic and people are gonna be parking over there. And I believe last week, um, just, uh, the east of the bus garage, there was a new gravel lot put in. That new gravel lot was where all the steel's gonna go. And then once we get established inside the actual arena area, there's another gravel spot that's gonna go down. So we'll strategically, depending on where the location of the building is, bring in more gravel. That way that could be a lay down area for the steel. That way that they're efficient when they, uh, need to start taking the building up out of the ground. All right, well, appreciate everybody's time tonight.
Great news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, moving on, uh, we now come to public participation. The Kings Board of Education recognizes, recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The board offers public participation to members of the public and applies the procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or viewpoint of the speaker. The board is also committed to conducting its public business meetings in a productive and efficient manner. The board provides a period for public participation at every regular meeting of the board and publishes rules to govern such particip, participation in board meetings. The board president is a presiding officer and will administer the rules of the board. Participants will avoid personal attacks on individuals during their public address to the board. If an individual has an issue with an employee, we ask that you request a private meeting with the superintendent or that employee's direct supervisor. The portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited is limited to thirty minutes unless extended by a vote of the board. Each participant will be limited to three minutes. Our speaker this evening we have is Sam Meisner.
Hello, uh, my name's Sam Meisner. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you, guys. Um, I know sometimes in leadership you hear a lot about when people are disgruntled, uh, and you don't hear as much when people are super thankful. So I wanted to show up today just to say how incredibly super thankful I am, uh, not just for the five board members, but all of our central office administration too. Uh, I know there's been a tremendous amount of work over the last months, especially, uh, during the levy election cycle. Um, and I'm just so thankful and relieved that our community has come through for us and supporting our schools. I know that comes at a cost. When I spoke last month, I talked about, you know, the cost of, you know, taxes going up, but also the, the cost of what could happen to our schools, and there was a lot of apprehension for me personally, but also a lot of our staff members too. And to see the community just overwhelmingly say, we believe in our schools, and we believe in our staff, and we believe in our leadership, and we believe in, um, our students and their future, has filled me with a tremendous amount of hope, especially, um, in a season where I felt like it was getting a little dicey. When I think about what contributed to that and, and the success of that, I think it started with a good plan. Um, you guys did a really good job, I think, of embodying our power five skills in terms of collaboration and communication and problem solving and listening to our community, who have said for a long time that our property taxes are high and, and feeling overwhelmed by the burden of that. I know there's been a tremendous amount of work, uh, advocating the state to increase our state funding. I know that work will continue. Um, I know I, that on my behalf, I, I'm committed to that as well. Um, so you listened to that, and you came up with a plan that was the first school district to ever have done that, um, to part, to do an income tax partnered with a, uh, property tax reduction. Um, you listened to the community and you problem solved well, and the plan was good from the get-go. I also think about all the tremendous amount of communication that went into, okay, we've got a good plan. How do we get it in front of people? The last two weeks, I think, leading up to the election, again, lots of apprehension, a lot of people asking me, you know, what, what do you think? You know, where do you think this is gonna fall? And I kind of felt like all you can And I kinda felt like all you can do in a, you know, democracy that votes on things is get the information and get the facts in front of people and then let the chips fall where they, where they fall. And I felt like, even though I didn't know which way we were, you know, how it was gonna land, I felt like we did a really good job and you all did a great job getting the facts out in front of people. And that was huge, um, in contributing to the success of, uh, of the campaign. And then the last thing I think of is just the vision that our community believes in, the vision of Kings, uh, and the vision of where education is going in the future and how we wanna be at the forefront of that, offering an amazing opportunities for our students. Um, I know I personally buy that vision and I know our community buys that vision of wealth of. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate you.
Okay, seeing that Mr. Meisner was our only person to sign up, we will move along to approval items from the treasurer. Mr. Morrow.
No additions from the work session. More than happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the board? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the items from the treasurer?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Morrow.
Mr. Belfrom.
Yes.
Ms. Groff.
Yes.
Ms. Callen.
Yes.
Ms. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Squirrel.
Yes. Moving along in our agenda, our next item is approval items from the superintendent. Mr. Sears.
Um, just the, uh, firecracker field trip coming up that we discussed last week.
There's no questions from the board. May I have a motion to approve the items for Mr. Sears?
Take that motion.
Mr. Morrow.
Ms. Callen.
Yes.
Ms. Phillips. Mr. Belfrom.
Yes.
Ms. Groff.
Yes.
Mr. Squirrel.
Yes. Next item on our agenda we have is approval items, Assistant Superintendent, HR Business. Mr. Lucky.
I think Mr. Sears is gonna take the first one.
Yeah, I'll take the personnel items. Uh, Mr. Spinner is not here tonight. He is at a job fair at Miami University recruiting, um, the future of Kings teachers there. So we're allowed him the opportunity to do that. Um, you will see, it, a lot of the personnel items were discussed last week. Um, what I do wanna point out one, and I'm gonna, I have, uh, some prepared statement on one. You will notice on there, we were, received a retirement, um, notice from, uh, JF Burns principal, Ms. Cheryl Montag. So that was something that she had been contemplating and, uh, we, we received that last week. But we wanna recognize and honor an extraordinary leader in the Kings community. Ms. Cheryl Montag, after forty-one remarkable years at JF Burns Elementary, serving as teacher, assistant principal, and ultimately principal. Cheryl is retiring from a place she has truly shaped and loved. Her impact is immeasurable. Her compassion, her unwavering student-centered approach and her commitment to putting people first have guided her every decision. She's touched the lives of thousands of children and families, helping to build the foundation for their success both in and out of the classroom. Her leadership has been steady, thoughtful and full of heart. Cheryl has modeled what it means to serve with integrity, kindness and humility. JF Burns is a better place because of her and our entire district is stronger for her decades of dedication. On behalf of the Kings Local School District, we extend our deepest gratitude to Cheryl for her service, her leadership and the legacy she leaves behind. We wish her nothing but joy and fulfillment in her well-deserved and earned retirement. So congratulations to Mrs. Montag.
I'll just piggyback on it. I, Mr. Sears and I talked, I have to say, so, uh, when I got here, uh, ten-ish years ago, Mrs. Montag actually taught my wife how to read, uh, in her first year at JF Burns. So, uh, she's always been super welcoming to me, um, and she'll be missed. So, uh, it's always nice to talk to her every time we kinda refer back to her first year at Kings and my wife being in her class. So very thankful for her. Uh, the only new additional item for tonight than what we had last week at the work session would be the new high school GMP that Mr. Bromback presented on. So nothing new there. Any questions from any of the board?
Okay, seeing no questions, may I have a motion to approve the approval items for Assistant Superintendent, HR Business?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Morrow.
Ms. Phillips.
Yes.
Ms. Groff.
Yes, and congratulations to Mrs. Montag.
Mr. Belfrom.
Yes.
Ms. Callen.
Yes.
Mr. Squirrel.
Yes. Moving in our agenda, we have approval items, Assistant Superintendent, Educational Programs. Thank you very much. All right, next item we have on our agenda is items presented by the board.
While at the OSBA conference, Mrs. Groff and I received certificates for, uh, South Lebanon Elementary and Kings Junior High, honoring them for the Purple Star Recognition Award. And, uh, that's it. They're going above and beyond for military families. And if you think about it, when someone leaves to go into the service, the children are usually left at home, which means during many deployment, the children not only don't have their father there, but they're also sometimes struggling with house safety. I'm my parents right now. So the Purple Star just recognizes buildings that go above and beyond to support not only the students, but the families of military families. So congratulations to both of them. And I'll give the certificates to Mr. Sears.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Uh, Mrs. Groff, do you have your student achievement presentation?
So, um, I thought it would be nice to have a few pictures to show of the new space at Columbia Intermediate School. Um, so I reached out to, um, Mr. Morrow over there and he sent some pictures. And, um, it's nice that Bill is still here, so you can actually see kids using the space that you built for us. So thank you. So this first, um, set of pictures, hold on. Um, as far as our Power Five skills, um, they, the collaborator and problem solver is seen here. Um, at Columbia, they, the I-time students are collaborating together to test fruits and vegetables at can, as conductive materials within a circuit. Once they create a successful circuit, they can problem solve to use the food items as a functional keyboard. A highlight of the week was a student who proudly was showing her class the banana and potato circuit she built, which she then used as piano keys to play a perfect rendition of Ode to Joy. And then in the STEAM classroom, um, we can see some critical thinkers and communicators here. These students, um, learned what a paper science engineer does by creating amazing pop-up books. They get to see several books as well as videos talking them through the engineering process. Students then create a prototype of their movable parts and present it before they begin their final project. They need to critically think to create their own projects and communicate with their partners and also when they present their final project to the class. So you can see the STEAM classroom in there and, I mean, the bookshelves and the desks and the colorful chairs. I just love that we can see our new space being used by kids. And then I had to include this picture, um, of our career-ready high school kids from the internship class. Six high school students traveled up to Columbus yesterday for the annual OSBA, which is our Ohio School Board Association, um, conference, to be featured in the Student Achievement Fair. These students spoke to school board members, superintendents and educational leaders from all over the state to tell them how our internship class is making them career-ready. Three of us were able to snap this picture with them in between their conversations and they very proudly represented Kings.
Thank you, Mrs. Groff.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other items, uh, presented by the board this evening? No? Okay, moving on, uh, legislative liaison, I understand we'll get those picked back up next.
Yes, next month.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Belfrom. Which brings me to our last item adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Morrow.
Ms. Callen.
Yes.
Mr. Belfrom.
Yes.
Ms. Phillips.
Yes.
Ms. Groff.
Yes.
Mr. Squirrel.
Yes. Thanks everyone for coming out. Have a good evening.